Great, thank you. Good morning, everybody. I'm going to call this notice, this notice, I'm going to call this special call meeting to P County Commissioners' Court to order. Today is Friday, July 28, 2023. The time is 10:02 a.m. We're physically located at P County Courthouse Commissioners' Courtroom, number 110-105 West Corpus Christi Street, Peville, Texas 78102. That was the call to order. Moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Item number two, approve the award of request for proposals, RFP number 22/23-009, data/fiber service table from the July 10, 2023 regular term meeting. We have our intrepid IT director, President Craig, if you want to take this, take the deus and give us a little bit of background on this and a recommendation and so on and so forth.
Craig Oliver, I'm the IT director for P County. I was notified by the auditor's office that we were out of contract with our service provider and we had to go back out for bid to get back into contract. So we went through the bid process, had two bids, and I'm going to be recommending according to the numbers on each of those bids. To give some background, currently right now, we have Spectrum Enterprise Services, which is our fiber optic provider. It gives us internet access for one service, and then we have another service, which is called ELAN, but I think they're, I think they changed the name of that since then to it's called Ethernet Eplan now. Basically, what that does is it's, it goes through their network, but it's completely segmented and secured as a private network to our facilities that we don't have a direct connection to. Apparently right now, the tax office has private fiber that the county owns that we built out years ago that goes from the tax office to the Community Affairs Building. It comes over to the Justice Building, Justice Center, and from there, it goes over to the Election Center, and then also on another split from where it goes to the Justice Center and splits off at a splice point, and then comes to the courthouse as well. Currently right now, with our switch upgrades we did two years ago, we were able to upgrade our optical retransceivers, which gave, you know, bumped us up privately from 1 gig to 10 gig. So we have 10 gig private connectivity back to our tax office where our data center is, and then we go out to the internet from there. Through Spectrum, we have currently 500 megs of internet service, which is what we call a DIA or Direct Internet Access. And then we have a hub-and-spoke platform, which is a private fiber ELAN service, which are 100 megs each that goes from the tax office, and then it spokes off to Roden Bridge, the Sheriff's Office, the Justice Center, and the County Expo. The proposal that we're looking at, that I've been looking over, monitoring from the last few years since the pandemic started, we've had an increase in utilization, which at different times, we have congestion, which is basically a lot of traffic going through small connections, usually through the ELAN service that connects our off-net connections or facilities. So with the bid, the comparisons that I took, they gave us pricing for different levels of service from 100 megs up to 1 gig. And then on the internet service, they gave us options of our current rate, which is 500 megs, to 1 gig and 2 gig. So looking at our, our internet connection, I'm proposing to go from 500 megs to 2 gigs and then upgrade our ELANS from 100 megs to 1 gig to relieve congestion, especially with the way technology's moving and everything is now, not just internet, but all services, you know, phones, TV, media, everything is going over. Internet is what they call a CDN or Content Service Delivery. So going through the different pricing, there is, here it is, I put a spreadsheet together specifically on those packages that I chose from the bids. So it's apples to apples, 2 gig from Foremost, 2 gigs from Spectrum, and 1 gig private Ethernet from Spectrum and 1 gig from Foremost. The pricing that was submitted with that, there was also in the bid, they had the county courthouse listed as one of the private fiber sites. I am not recommending to add that to our service, since we already have private connectivity that we own, which is not just, you know, would be a 1 gig connection, we have a 10 gig connection private. So we've already got that service available. I don't believe that we need a redundant service at the courthouse for that, especially since everything goes back to the tax office for internet connectivity regardless. So with that said, instead of six sites for ELAN, it's five sites, which reduced the cost. And you'll see on the sheet that I handed out, at the very top, the pricing accordingly, the top one is the 2 gig internet service, the five sites for ELAN, our static IP addresses that we have for secure connectivity between our vendors and other services that we have to have as a static address. So our total came out to, Foremost came in at 5940, and Spectrum came in at 4689, which is a cost difference of $1,251. Over the term of the 60-month contract term, that would be, if we went with Foremost, it would be a $75,000 increase expenditure comparatively. Also at the bottom, our current costs of what we are spending currently right now, we're spending $4,271 currently, and I'm not including the Sheriff's Office voice communications and TV services for the jail and things, because that's completely separate. I don't manage and maintain that. That is the SO independently. We do have a redundant connection to the SO just for failover, but they operate everything else on their services independently from anything that comes through my office. So I'm only focusing on what I, our department manages and maintains. We currently spend 4,271. With the new MRC proposal that I'm recommending from Spectrum, it would be 4,689, which is a cost difference of $418 a month increase.
What does MRC stand for?
Monthly Recurring Charges.
Okay.
And NRC would be Non-Recurring Charges, which is a one-time expenditure. So there's one internet connection that we have that is a coax internet connection, which we were trying to get away from because the voice quality over coax just really isn't optimal. We went through this years ago, if you remember, when we went from, you know, analog system to VoIP. And once we went to fiber, we cleared out a lot of those issues. At the probation office, this connection feeds actually both adult and juvenile. It comes into the juvenile office, and then we have a private fiber line between both buildings to connect adult probation. That cost is $400 a month. Since we have connectivity to Roden Bridge, my other proposal is a one-time $2,500 expenditure to connect another private fiber line from juvenile to Roden Bridge to connect into the private service coming from Spectrum. That would save $400 a month, which is roughly about almost $24,000 over the term comparatively to a one-time charge of 2,500. So when you, when you remove that $400 a month in that internet service connection and we do a private line, it reduces that $418 difference down to $19. Basically, a $19 increase from what we currently are spending to what we are looking at. Now, the data connection to the internet is four times faster than what I'm proposing than what we have. And then, of course, to each of our off-net facilities, it's 10 times faster than what we currently have, which would be, you know, a good mark to put in place now and for any future engineering. I know EOC is moving from the Justice Center out to Expo facilities, new building they're putting up out there. They're going to be a lot faster than what we have out there to support that new center, command center. So, questions?
I have a question. I was confused the last time. I'm still confused. What did we ask them to bid on? Did we have a specific number? We had them all bid on the same thing? Because everything I see is all different.
There are different prices for different packages.
Right, but what did we ask them to bid on?
We asked them to bid on different package levels of what service they provide. And there are specific packages, which is, if you see the service description, is 100 megs up to 2 gigs on their different package levels.
But did we specifically say, I want you to bid on this for this? We did not.
No, we asked for a range, therefore we could pick and choose what we wanted to request from the provider.
We didn't know what we wanted when we started?
I did.
But you didn't ask for each one specifically to bid on this for this package and this for this package? Because everything I see, they're bidding apples and oranges for the same thing. And then we choose which ones we like the best?
Well, it's actually apples to apples if you go line for line. So their 100 meg compared to this 100 meg, they're, you know, Foremost 200 to Spectrum, and so forth and so forth.
So we have 100 now, and you're proposing, I mean, to go to 1 gig? There's nothing in between?
Yeah.
We have 100 now?
We can go to 200 or 500.
No, 500 too.
I'm just looking at future engineering.
But currently, we're at 500 megs.
Internet. They're two separate, they're two separate products. Internet is our gateway to the world, and the ELAN is just basically like our private fiber that we own.
Mm-hmm.
The carrier is providing that instead, since they have fiber all over. So we didn't have to spend the $500,000 in construction fees.
Let me ask you a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, so what do we currently have? We have 500 megs for Wi-Fi?
Internet access.
And then what do we have for ELAN?
100 megs to each off-net facility.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Help me out here. Spectrum, they're going to increase their stuff to 1 gig. Are they going to have to run new cable? They're not going to have to run cable?
No.
All they have to do is flip a switch or do something different?
Currently, right now, going to 1 gig, it would all, all they'd have to do is change the queue measurement on that connection. Anything over 1 gig, if it's on a 1 gig optic, they would have to change the optics out on both ends to be able to support higher than that. So.
But basically, the fiber's already there, and all they have to do is turn a switch and increase the amount of stuff going through the cable?
Yes. Currently on single-mode fiber, engineers and scientists don't have a clue about how much capacity it can hold per strand. Currently, right now, the public testing that I know of is up to 400 gigs.
So it's not going to cost them a thing, honestly, to?
Facilities are already in place. All they'd have to do is change out the hardware on end-to-end, if it goes over a specific level.
But the price goes up?
Naturally.
And if we were to go somewhere else?
If we were to move to another provider, there would also be engineering involved on my side, the timing facility, you know, to move from one carrier to another. There would be new construction coming in to provide that because it's not our current facility. And then I would have the time and efforts of having to contact all of our vendors that we connect with and do business with to update their, you know, our new IP addressing that we would have to get from a new carrier. So there would be a lot more time and effort on my part to be, to be able to migrate. And for basically $20 a month difference, I really don't see the benefit at this time.
Well, and I've put a copy of this on each commissioner's desk. Looking at Spectrum, there's another way to look at this, and looking at Foremost, they're saying they can save us $100,000 over five years with their proposal. I don't know enough about this to say yes or no or whatever.
I looked at the numbers on that, and the numbers he was comparing to from Spectrum caused, I don't know where that number came from. He was predicting that we were spending over $8,000 a month, which we are not.
Well, it says here 4,630 a month, not 8,000.
That was probably a corrected email from yesterday, if that was the case.
I'm, I'll be honest with you, I'm conflicted because.
But he's also not proposing the same packages either. So if you look at it, he's proposing...
But I'm conflicted. I'll be honest with you, because I see a savings of $100,000. No cost for running the fiber, no cost at all to the county, but a savings of $100,000 over 60 months to do the same thing, basically. Am I reading this wrong?
I can't speak for this spreadsheet. The numbers that I ran according to the proposal that's in front of you, because this, this right here that you're looking at is after the fact of the proposal. That's not in the bid.
Yeah, but that's why I asked the question to start with. What did we bid on? What did they bid on? And from what I understand, they just bid and we picked what we wanted out of this.
Yes, sir. They bid on multiple different packages with different levels to give us the opportunity to see what would be best for us.
What were the packages that we put the parameters on?
From 100 megs to 2 gigs.
Madam Auditor, we have a bid. I know there's, Craig, I know you're getting peppered a little bit with some questions right now, but I know the time and effort went into putting that bid together. And I think one of the things, if I kind of, maybe I'm jumping ahead of the gun, and so we don't have to keep moving forward. We can come back to this discussion. But just in general, it would appear that there may be some input or direction that Commissioners' Court might want to provide to Craig with respect to his proposal as to the level of service that we actually want to consider in, in the event that we can provide that. And I'm just thinking, and it's going to be oversimplistic, but if we wanted to lower the increase in the ELAN, you know, by, from 1 gig to 500 MPS, MBP, whatever it is, megs, then we could provide Craig's office with guidance, and he could tailor a bid proposal that would be specific, that would require any entity that wanted to bid to provide the same numbers, the same proposal, based on our coalescence of what it is that we actually want to provide. But at this time, we already have on this bid package that's gone out and that our potential vendors have submitted a bid on. We're kind of stuck with what we have. What would be the process, or is it, is it allowed? Or is there any issue if we were to pass on these bids and rebid a more tailored package and go forward? Can we, is that something that this Commissioners' Court could do to allay some of our, I think really, it's, and it's unfortunate because I know, Craig, you have the technical knowledge to just, we can pepper you questions all day, and you can provide good, clean, clear answers, but that doesn't mean that we still understand them. And so I'm not, I'm just not sure that we're ever going to get this morning to a, to a super good comfort level. Is that something that we can do?
And that's the specs. So if we tighten up the specs to be tailored, and so that's, that's what we need, I guess, guidance. Are we, does Mr. Oliver want to go straight from the one, you know, the 100 to the 1 gig? Is that where he want, you know, do we want to go straight there?
Is what I suggested. Can we do that?
Of course we can do that, because we can, we can reject all bids and go out for rebids, since this is our first bid.
And the only reason I'm bringing it up is I think that some of the commissioners, and myself included, we may have some concerns that maybe the way the bids were submitted would give the participants an indication that maybe they weren't, they weren't provided the opportunity to give their best, but their best went forward specifically what we want, as opposed to sort of the other approach where we can pick and choose, which from a pragmatic standpoint, I totally agree with.
Yeah, because this, this gives us options, and that's what, that's what they bid on, was giving the court options, giving Mr. Oliver options to recommend to the court. And so that's, you know, that's not unheard of. We do bids like that. We do scope like that to give us, to give us options. But if you don't want an option...
We go from 100 to 500 or 300, a couple of choices there. Now, this is going from 100 to 1 gig. There's nothing in between?
There's nothing in between, and...
Usually, the steps are 1, 200, 500, 1 gig. But, I mean, they can actually create whatever they want.
That's, that's just one step. I didn't know there was three steps in between. So, or a choice. Or if there is some congestion, could 300 relieve that congestion?
It could. But over a 60-month term, it's very possible we could have that congestion again, depending on how we, you know, start utilizing more technology and things like that. We could do that again within the term. So I'm looking at not only increasing our capacity needs, but also additional capacity for future engineering as well, which, you know, when you look at it, it's not a huge amount of difference to go due to the full gig.
That was my question. What is the difference in savings, or cost rather, going from 500 to 1 gig, and then talking over a 60-month?
It's about $110 a month times 5. So, what, $550 each?
Total.
No, total. About $110 difference per site.
But I think where the challenge is, is because we're not kind of heading where you were heading before. It's hard to make an equivalency between each contractor and how to set it out, just because of the packages, the way they're structured.
But if you also look at the bottom of the sheet that I handed you.
It is apples to apples.
After we connect juvenile probation or Roden Bridge privately, the only cost difference from what we're currently spending is about $19 a month increase, total, not per site, but total. And that would increase our internet connection four times and increase our off-net private connections 10 times.
Craig, and I apologize for saying this, but to make it more clear for me, if we're going to say, okay, we want to go with 1 gig, we should tell everybody who's bidding, we want 1 gig here, 500 here, 1 gig here, bid on that. That's the way I'm coming from.
And see, and that, that's the direction that we didn't have. That's the direction we don't have. Do we want to save money, or do we want to increase our?
We prefer by capacity.
Okay.
And $19 a month, that's really great.
So that's the dressing act we have going on, Commissioner.
But when I look at this, and I say $100,000, that, that grabs my attention. Do we?
But you're wanting to know where, where is that coming from?
Exactly. How do we get there? And we want both of them to bid on the same thing so we can talk apples and apples.
And they did, and this, this is, but it's, it's hard to, I guess, to see the apples to apples, Commissioner, but it, but it is apple to apples to apples. You're, the 100, it has a 100 here, and it's just in a different kind of format.
And, sir, that, that spreadsheet you're looking at is all an email after the fact of the accepted proposals. I'm basing this on the proposal that we have, that we have to look at. I can't look at those numbers.
But that's where I'm coming from. I'm thinking maybe we need to go back, rebid this, and have everybody bid on this package and this package, so they're bidding on exactly the same thing. The packages that you selected have been bid on those packages.
They, they yes?
Do we want to go up like that? And so please, at this time, give Mr. Oliver that direction. Is that where the court wants to go? Do we want to go that upgrade in infrastructure? Do we want to go that far?
Quick question. If I recall correctly, when they presented their prices, there was an error in a proposal.
That was the last, right, and we cannot, we cannot accept that after the fact.
So is this after the fact?
I don't.
Rebid, and come back with a?
I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware that that went out like that to everybody. I didn't know that.
Just to jump around a little bit and make it more difficult for all of us up here.
Please, Judge.
You're welcome. I try to provide, if I can, there anywhere possible. Based on, on Craig's summary, I can tell you my, my general thought process is if this bears out and for, over the course of five years, we can really, really expand our connectivity for an additional $19 a month. To me, that seems to make really good sense. And it's not that great of an additional cost, and that would be, I guess, 2 gig for internet and 1 gig for the ELAN. Is that something that this court would be, I guess, I'd open up the discussion to, on volume. We know where we're currently at, 500 and 100, and how we're operating. Is 2 and 1 something we're comfortable with, or is it something that we'd like to pare down a little bit?
My thought on it is, you don't want to, if it's not going to cost but a minimal amount, to go ahead and go with the 1 versus where we're at. You don't want to go halfway and then at that point go, man, we should have went to 1, when it didn't cost us pennies on the dollar to do it, basically, at that time.
And technology's moving so fast that you think it's going to, I know, I'm struggling with my personal usage, you know, it just keeps going up.
Oh, yeah.
Just with normal software enhancements. Then the other part that, that, you know, is all the added non-visible cost to, you know... Then the other part that, that, you know, is all the added non-visible cost to, you know, the staff time involved to get everything upgraded, changing IP address, you know, proper new cabling, all those things that we need to go in there, that's costs that you really don't see, but it is an added cost. So I mean, I have to agree with you, Judge. That's a minimal amount compared to when you look at the bigger picture. Now, getting back to the challenge of the original bids, I'm still learning the procurement process here for the county. I mean, bids were submitted incorrectly. So, and the world I came from, it probably got thrown out right then and they're not allowed to be bid, but apparently he was allowed to come back and turn his prices back down.
No, no, no.
No, no, sir. No, sir.
The bid was turned in correctly. It was a correction they made internally on their side.
And, and that is, that is, that should not have, that should not be submitted because once the bid is submitted, if they're rejected, then they're, they're rejected by the court and we have, we're not there yet. So right now it's the bids that were submitted first and the first agenda item. This is what we're looking at.
That is correct.
And I do like the fact that it's been, you said a $2,500 one-time fee to connect the probation offices versus paying the 400 and something per month?
That, that's an estimate. It may actually be cheaper.
That could be done tomorrow.
But I've always been, you know, let me ask for more and then save money than not ask for enough and have to come back.
Did we talk about that during our initial budget? Did we? Did I say go ahead and do that?
You, you did, but I didn't have the money left in my budget to cover it.
Okay, we'll have-
Yeah, because we've already spent what?
Yes.
What we did, we did switches, we did, we did some-
New switches, PCs and I-
Yes, we've already spent the 20.
There's some other line item we can transfer over.
How much?
It's 25.
The 25, that would cost to do it.
The $25?
About 2500.
It'd be nice with $25.
$25? No, because I, that's fine.
2500 to save 400 and something a month. That's a no-brainer.
Yes, yes, yes.
No, sir. Thank you, sir.
You better just usher.
Just say yes, yes.
And the other thing to consider as well is if you're looking at moving to another carrier, when it comes to fiber optic carrier services, because it is a new provider, they would have to bring their own facilities into each site location. And typically, you know, over the 30 years that I've been doing this, that can go anywhere from 25 days if they have service, you know, fiber in the building. But if there's no fiber in the building, there's usually somewhere between 60 to 180-day build-out. And that can also fluctuate depending on the geographic area. I've had projects in Indiana where we waited 13 months for fiber to be delivered, so.
So I guess, and that is an, maybe not that component just because it's, it's very tangential. But, but there are, there is, and I think Commissioner Olivatos mentioned it, those hard cost components, based on what you had initially said, that from, from switching from our current provider to a new provider, there are some additional expenses out of your office that, you know, as far as man-hours go and mechanics for that switch out that-
No, no cost in the construction and installation, but there would be-
It's just, yeah, it's just delay. It's just-
Other variables.
Additional effort, which I think is something that, that, you know, we should consider when we're looking at these two proposals. At this point in time, though, are we back to the, what are we looking at? Are we looking at 2 and 1?
From 1 to 1 gig and 500 to 1?
2 gig. Is it 1 to 2 or is it just straight 2 gig?
2 gig DIA and 1 gig ELAN.
How do y'all feel about that in general?
Well, I understand.
You do?
Really?
I'm good with it.
What is MRC?
You know, when you look at the overall-
Monthly recurring costs.
When you, when you look at the overall cost of $19 here, I mean, to me, that makes sense from an economic standpoint. You know, not sure, I mean, apparently these costs can happen.
And that's for one, that's for, that's for one. I mean, I, I mean, because this is an overall increase. It will, will be an increase overall and it won't be just $19. So I would not want to be, keep saying $19 because it will be, it will be more.
It's like 5 or 6 thousand.
There is also, there was one other item I saw in the current Spectrum bill that for some reason we're paying a coax internet connection at Roden Bridge that should have been disconnected a couple of years ago. So that's another, I think, $140 or $150 that we'll be eliminating as well from current billing, not, not in the proposal, but the current billing. But that was, looking over what they sent me for what they have currently, I noticed that that was still active and I need to get with the auditor to have them disconnect that.
I guess at this point in time, if Commissioners Court is ready to move forward on awarding a bid to one of the two, or awarding a bid to one of these two bidders, then I entertain that motion. Or alternatively, if Commissioners, if Commissioners Court believes that we ought to reject both bids and put the bid, rebid, a package out that is specific as to what we're requesting to be bidded and I'm presuming that we're okay with the 1 gig, 2 gig upgrade, then I'd entertain that motion as well. But unless y'all have some other component that you'd like clarification on, we've been discussing this for about 35 minutes. So I don't, I'm not going to understand more of the technical. I'm relying on Craig for the technical components. I just don't know what the will of the court is at this point in time.
I could start it up. For instance, I'm not sure they were bidding on the same things. Whenever we can say, give us a whole range and we'll pick what we want out of it. I just, that's the only part that bugs me. I'll go with whatever the court wants to do.
So visually, Greg, so if we say, go back and do a rebid and we want the, the 2 gig for the DIA and the 1 gig for the MPLS, are we going to come back with these same numbers?
I can't be, I can't give an honest answer for that because almost has reached out and said, oh, our, our numbers were wrong in our software and we need to correct those. And it was like, you already turned a bid in. We're sorry. That has to be fair for all parties. So I can't give an honest answer to that.
What's the truth figure on the chart? You said $19. That's not, that's not-
No, no, that, that isn't the overall increase. No.
The current, the current expense right now, Commissioner, is $4,271.
Okay.
Because from 500, just this one, the tax office I see from the 500 to the 100, the difference is $400. And that's monthly. And this is for one site. So the, and that's just pulling out this one number from this, from this one. So, I mean, I'm only giving one number.
So $19 is not the true figure?
I, I don't know where the $19 is coming from. So if you want to go through-
The $19, what I'm showing is our current expenses. The new MRC for the packages that I was recommending minus our current expenses, which is the $418 difference. The $19 is subtracting the $400 internet connection from juvenile probation. Once we get that fiber line connected from juvenile to Roden Bridge to connect into the fiber. At that point, when you remove that $400 from there, it comes down to $19.
$19 increase. Gotcha.
Something to consider too is that both the bidders have submitted their numbers and they're public information and they both know what those numbers are. So.
That's kind of our take.
That's just, yeah, that's just, it is what it is. And if the court wants to reject these bids and rebid, then we're doing, we're doing due diligence. And, and it is what it is when we get them back.
Right.
So it just depends how y'all want to go with it.
I guess the other component, if we were to establish, I mean, we've been around the package. We're saying that we are comparing apples to apples based on the packages and we're just pulling out the number and allowing us to take that data and massage it to make it fit on you. When you go back out for bid again, you know, now you're getting into another competitive bid. So, you know, typically they're going to try and go with the bids to get. The other component that I'm not seeing is the serviceability after you get onboard with a new contractor, how we're going to service. Can you rely on them? The technical support that you need, we can get that. Those are the things that you don't typically have in a bid, but it plays a big part at the end of the day. Reliability of that component, are we going to get that? Spectrum is a big company. They've been fairly reliable. I personally use them on a personal note. I'm not familiar with the other companies. They would be able to provide the same service. But that's a component that goes into the overall evaluation of bids.
If I could, Commissioner, if my memory is correct from the last meeting, the, the bidding company said they were servicing the city, the school, a lot of surrounding cities and schools, and I think Duval County.
And we have our, we have our vendor here if you'd like to.
No.
That's what I-
Okay, so it's, so I don't know how y'all want to go because we can re, we can rebid if you feel more comfortable in tightening up the specs.
Right, I'm waiting on it. I, I mean, we can just, we can break it out this way. I, so we'll put it this way. I'd make a motion to follow the recommendation of our IT director in awarding the bid to Spectrum at the 2 gig, 1 gig set out as presented by Mr. Oliver this morning. So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? And this is just pushing it forward. If we want to, if we want to proceed, if we aren't comfortable that way, if the will of the court doesn't support that, then we can proceed with the alternative method just to get us all set. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Motion passes 3 to 2. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Thank you, sir, for coming. Thank you for your interest and your effort on behalf of DeKalb County. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Excuse me.
You may. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Moving on. Item number 3. Approved recommended changes to waste management fee schedule tabled during the July 10, 2023 regular term meeting. Ms. Molly, I'll give you the floor. Tell us what we've got. Yeah, you can come on down. I guess I should probably just give out and then Ms. Molly, I'll try to take my apologies.
I know it's kind of hard to rebid.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Molly Cabada, interim Road and Bridge Director. I got a call from Commissioner DeWitt last night asking for some prices from surrounding counties. And so as quick as I could, I prescribed a few, a few places, one of them being Karnes County and Goliad. And they had two other sites in three rivers, between three rivers in Northwest and Magarto. But I tried to access their prices and I called them this morning and we have to visit. We go out there and get the list because they have no access to email. So I couldn't get that.
That's interesting. They wouldn't know what their prices were.
Yeah.
And you had to go outside to find it.
Yeah, it wasn't even on their webpage or anything.
And go to the gate. And I apologize to Roden Bridge Office. It was late yesterday after when I called, but I thought that the Commissioners Court did this.
I'm so glad you did. And Ms. Cabada, let me apologize to the Commissioners and to you. I think with the resignation of Ray, Ray was here at the last Commissioners Court meeting and I failed to remind you of this entirely. So I think what we were asking Ray to come back with was to give us proposed new numbers. Yeah. And it doesn't look like we're quite there yet. Are you ready to make a recommended proposal on increased rates?
Well, I spoke to crew members yesterday after I got your call together. So I, I just generally asked them, what was their idea about increasing prices? And nobody was for it, for the simple fact that if we do, the prices we have now, people are barely coming to want to pay. Now, if we go up, then we'll end up finding it alongside the road more and Commissioner Linni and bigger jobs.
Sorry, Ms. Ray.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pay by the month.
And if it wasn't him, they thought it would be them and both the employees themselves would have to be sent out to pick it up.
Madam. Comment?
Of course.
So, you know, from a business standpoint and hearing the information is coming in, obviously our rates are extremely low when you compare it to the other counties. And from the business side of it, you know, you can't keep operating that way. You're just operating at loss. However, that being said, I also recognize that the county has, I need to use the word obligation, but in order to, you know, facilitate the removal of this trash, the county is going to pick up, pick it up at a loss. And it's been like that for a number of years. So I'm, I'm good with raising the rates. However, that being said, I also have been talking to others as well and Skidmore and the others, local areas there, there is so much trash that's being stored on personal property, storing up and back with pickup trucks. Neighbors are starting to complain and I know this week I picked up, you know, over 12 bags of trash, two blocks, by the way, just to point that out. But people don't want it, I don't know, 50 cents is pretty cheap to me. And when you compare that with Beagle's paying and these other outline, it's really cheap. But the mindset is it's easier for me to throw it out the back of my pickup truck on the county road and let somebody else pick it up and, you know, don't get rid of it. So that's my biggest concern. If we increase the rates, based on what I'm seeing today, we're going to have more, more trash on the county road. And it's hard to change, I, I had this discussion with, with another person. It's hard to change these behaviors and I don't think it's not a good behavior, but it is what it is. You know, there's just too much trash that is being dumped. And it was funny, I saw, you know, I'm thinking of posting a sign. I saw a sign, do not, anyhow, dumping is prohibited by law and so forth. And right next to the sign, there's a big trash bag that somebody had. So, you know, I'm a little bit conflicted. You know, what, what would be the right rating? Definitely, you know, from a business standpoint, it should go up. But is that going to change the behaviors? The other part, and Molly, don't, don't take this wrong, at the collection side is, is it being properly monitored? Is there a lot of free dumping? Is there, you know, instead of paying one bag, you're paying, get two bags for free? You know, I don't know the mechanics and I'm not trying to insinuate anything here, but are we going to like to write a lot of money in terms of that goods?
Well, right now-
And it's hard to manage.
Yeah, the operators are instructed to give them a receipt for their items that are bringing and indicate on their receipt what they brought. And that's how we go by.
I think they keep a pretty close eye on it.
Yeah, we have somebody sitting there.
Judge, if I could, I'll be honest, I'm the one that asked if we take a look at this. So I'm in this quicksand by myself right now. We had, we hadn't looked at it since 1989. Madam Auditor, I think that you said we're collecting how many thousands of dollars as it is now?
So we have two collection sites and the budget, the expenditure for both of those sites is 422,000 and we collect 65,000.
Okay, 65,000 baseball we're doing now. I also had a meeting with several people this morning and we talked about it. And they said, well, the thing you're going to get into, if you go from 50 cents to 55 cents, they're going to say, well, I don't have a nickel. And, and the consensus, I know that we have our, we're with the trash collection service where we live just north of town. They just went up. They were bought out by Frontier. It was absolute waste water. And it's costing us about $45 a month and we have a dumpster that's picked up once a week. And I extrapolated what a normal citizen out in the county might be spending. It's going to be somewhere around that amount going to our collection stations. The two collection stations are in Commissioner Oliver's and my precincts. Some of the other folks come up there. Judge, after listening to what I heard this morning from the folks and Commissioner Oliver's, I'm going to recommend we take no action with this, look at it in a few years. That's my motion.
Maybe another 35 years.
Maybe another 35 years, yes.
I have a motion, an official motion to take no action on this. If you've got a second, if you've got multiple seconds. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, General. Thank you, Ms. Cabada.
Yes, thank you. And we did our due diligence by taking a look at it.
That's right. Yeah, and I appreciate that. My implication, my, my inclination was the same this year. It was like, well, at least we raise these a little bit, but uh-
Well, and I thought about-
But I agree. What's the difference?
If we raised 10% and then rounded everything off to five zeros, but what have we accomplished?
Yeah, we really haven't.
We haven't accomplished-
Just irritated everybody.
Exactly.
What, what I'm also learning, even though it's just a nickel.
That's right. You did it.
And you're doubling up, you know, you go to McCoys and you're paying twice the cost for a 2x4. And, and if you're, you're doubling up, you know, you go to McCoys and you're paying twice the cost for a two-by-four.
Anyway, thank you, Courtney. I appreciate it. We did our due diligence.
Yes, sir. Moving on. Agenda item number four. Approve authorization to issue request for proposals, RFP, for administration project delivery service providers to complete project implementation for the Economic Development Administration disaster supplemental funding administered by the Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration. We have Mr. Seitz, our executive director, president of the Area Partnership, and we also have Kevin. I'm so sorry, Kevin. With Grant Works to provide a brief overview. But just in, in general, like I explained, or wait, no, I don't know. This is, oh, this hasn't come up. I think it may be in our public comments at Monday's meeting. There's an opportunity, a potential opportunity for federal grant monies to be available to the BDA, the Development Authority, for improvements to one or more of the large hangers out there, which would benefit that existing tenant's needs for growth and expansion of economic development in our community. Mr. Seitz, Kevin, I forgot your last name, I'm sorry.
Kevin Caruth.
Mr. Caruth, if y'all want to take the floor and provide us with a, a nice brief summary, and we can open the floor for any questions.
Yeah, Judge, Judging Commissioners, the judge is absolutely correct. We continue to get the funnel filled with leads of companies that are looking for existing space. It's prudent for us to look at the assets that we currently have and make capital improvements to them so that they're attractive enough for companies that are looking to expand tomorrow to come in and be able to do that. So we have an opportunity because of the storm that happened a couple of years ago. Texas was designated as a distressed area, the entire state of Texas, by the federal government, opening up an opportunity for grant funds from the EDA that would allow us to make capital improvements on one of the assets that we have out of the B Development Authority, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand square foot building that we have an existing tenant that is ready to plug some equipment into and hire about two hundred people. But I also have an aircraft manufacturing company that I'm wooing right now. And I also have a site visit scheduled from a company from Europe that manufactures large equipment. By doing these upgrades, it puts us in a very good position to be attractive to these companies that are looking. So Kevin Caruth with Grant Works has brought this opportunity to our attention. And there's an opportunity for us, a very good opportunity for us to, to gain these funds. So I'll turn it over to Kevin.
And Mr. Caruth, if you could begin by explaining why we're considering this, the intersection of county government and this, this grant specifically, and what our goal would be.
Okay. So this is a, Ray said this is a special allocation from the EDA. Normally, you have to meet a distress threshold, that's not the case here. And normally, it's a fifty percent match. And this program is twenty percent because it's a special allocation. The one thing to keep in mind is that because it is a special allocation, it's only good as long as the money lasts. So as soon as they run out of money, it's gone. We anticipate that, so start taking applications, and money will probably run out towards the end of September. So timing is, is very important here. But BDA has the, the potential job creators. The county would be the actual applicant. And that's, that's where the connection is.
You said deadline is what?
Well, there's no, there's no deadline. Get it in as soon as possible, but they, we anticipate.
The, the flyer that you presented to us says that they're making their decision August twenty-sixth.
That's when they, they're, why not? The August twenty-sixth date is in there. But the, they're taking the applications now. The first application, the first decision date is August twenty-sixth. But then they start handing out money from that point forward. And they will continue to do so until they run out.
So that's not the deadline for this grant?
No, but you need to get it in as soon as possible. Because as soon as they run out of money, they're done.
There's, there's a hundred and ten million dollars in total, and it's open to every community across the country. So obviously, it's competitive. So the faster we get it in, the higher the probability that we'll get approved.
Two questions.
Yes.
The twenty percent match, BDA has that, or the county has to come up with that?
The- I, I think there's a couple of things that could be done. There's a tenant that is in desperate need of that electric capacity. I think that it would be prudent for us to ask that tenant to come up with the matching funds. If that doesn't happen, the backup plan obviously would be to look towards the BDA to come up with the, with the funds.
And how much money are we talking about?
It would be a five hundred thousand dollar grant, or up to a five hundred thousand dollar grant. So the twenty percent obviously would be a hundred thousand dollars.
And what is it going to build?
It, it will allow the electric capacity that comes to the building to be dispersed to the outlets that exist throughout the building. So right now, that infrastructure is not in there. So what happened to it, I, I have no idea. But it would be the switch equipment and the, and the copper wires that take the electricity from the transformer on the outside to various outlets that are on the inside.
So what, what prompted this change or for the upgrade?
We have, we have a company called Bear Solutions that is a injection molding company that has chosen that site for their expansion. And they've got about a million dollars' worth of equipment sitting on the floor that can't be plugged in.
So was that not identified early?
I don't know the answer to that. It should, yes, should have been.
I think there's some dispute with respect to that, so let's see it that way. Providing fodder to either side of that.
Okay.
If, if at all possible.
Just.
Yeah, I know.
So right now, right now, the county is not in the position to say, okay, we have to do the twenty percent. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
I'll make the motion approved.
Well, what kind of reporting? I mean, what, I mean, what is, would my office be?
Wait, stop, everybody. I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Further discussion? Now we can all get worked up.
The, the motion before you is to go out for bids to some, to an organization that can provide the coordination of the, of the grant. That's for Grant Works, Kevin.
I, I should have said this initially. So really, what is being presented to the court and the request, this agenda item for the court, is, would be to obligate our, we would be the administrator of this, the formal administrator of this grant like our other county grants, and Mrs. Kentoo's office would serve in that role. So there, there would be a reporting requirement, just like all the other grants that, that we operate. And the, the discussion and the motion that's on the floor now, subject to the, are in conformance with the, the agenda item, is, is that we will be issuing requests for proposals to go out to get that administrator. So on any of the other grants that we've done, we go through this process, and Commissioners Court decides, is this something we want to even seek? And if it's something that we want to seek, then we approve going out for bid. We go out for bid to try to find an administrator. We obtain an administrator. And I think that's a, is that a thirty-day turnaround?
Um, a bid is two weeks.
Two weeks, so a two-week turnaround.
Yeah, I mean, it has to be in, in the paper for two weeks, which we need a week before to get it in. And then, you know, and then, of course, to get into Commissioners Court.
And then we would, so playing it out, if this is something that Commissioners Courts would, Commissioners Court would approve, then we'd go through that, submitting that bid. If that bid were approved, we'd have somebody like Grant Works or, or another entity would act as the administrator, and they'd go through the same process. They'd have to bring something back to us. But I won't consider, and I'm not suggesting by putting this on the agenda that B County pay any, use any, any funds, any, any funds that we have on hand or that we may generate to finance any component of this process except for the, you know, unaccountable cost of our auditor's department in managing.
And I need a POC also. I need a POC for my office to be in contact with about it.
Here, right here.
A POC, a point of contact, I need a point of contact.
If I could clarify my motion.
Absolutely.
I'm going to read from the document here.
Yes, sir.
My motion is to authorize to issue request for proposals for administrative project delivery service providers to complete the project implementation of the economic development administrator. This is actually supplemental funding administered by the Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration.
Okay, I have amended motion, and my second, amended second. Further discussion?
So your, your action today does not obligate the county to anything, any expenditure or any obligation to do anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, just, Judge, I would also like to make all the Commissioners aware of the alternative. So if we don't seek grant, grant funds, you essentially have an asset out there that at some point in time is going to need this five hundred thousand dollars of improvements done at some point in time. And now there's a hope of, a prayer of, a maybe, of a might, that we'll find a company that wants to be in there so badly that they'll say, even though it's not my asset, I'll give you a five hundred thousand dollars and I'll pay for it. The odds of that happening, I think, are very far and few between. So if we can seek a grant to put that infrastructure in there that will allow us to help an existing tenant that's already in there that's going to create two new jobs, and put me in a better position for these prospects that we've got coming in over the next few months, I think it's money, money well spent.
Well, and, and thank you for that, Mr. Seitz. I think the, from this court's position, certainly my position, the concern and the, and the consideration has less to do with the potential benefits and more to do with, I mean, that's certainly an important component, but that's there. We get that. The, the counter, counterargument is, what burden is it going to put on our auditor's department? Can we support it? Is it something that physically we can, we can undertake? And how will that interaction work between the BDA and B County in this official pass-through type system? And I know, you know, if Grant Works ultimately bids on it and is awarded, I know we've got a good working history with Grant Works. We have a working history with other grant administrators, so I'm, I'm sure there's a pathway through. But I understand Mrs. Kentoo's concerns, initial concerns about how is this actually going to work? Because we, we just don't want to end up where we're left holding the bag, or putting ourselves in some situation that might damage our ability to seek future grants, further grants, additional grants, because we do not control. We have four seats on the B Development Authority, but we do not control the B Development Authority. It's a quasi-governmental entity separate and apart from this August entity. And so those are, those are concerns that I think at the very least, we need to make sure that, if this motion passes, that we're thinking about, that your office and the BDA's board is cognizant of and understands, and is willing to be very proactive when it comes to dealing with our auditor. Our auditor is incredibly busy. We are in the middle of, we're in the final stages of, we're in the nasty part of our budget process.
We're in the weeds.
And y'all are contemplating that we're going to undertake this during that process. Can I ask one final question before I turn the, I'll, I'll open it back up to the Commissioners for any further discussion? But did the BDA meet yesterday? And if they did, did they take a, a vote on this? What's, where are we at?
Yes, affirmative vote. We have formed, we met, we agreed to come to the, to the court to see if they would undertake that on. And that's, can't you take it on? Is this something, a load? And that's why I kept asking about the deadline. And I was asking about the dates, you know? And then after the, it's in the paper for two weeks. How long after that, do, you know, do we put it out there? Do we take bids, or somebody turns in their packages? We score the packs. We award the package. If you look at a calendar, it's tight.
And then you do, and then you do the application. That was kind of like our deadline, right? We were really.
I mean, if you do it beforehand, that's not really, yeah, not right up there, or whatever.
Which is tough. And we don't want to lose the opportunity, because like Mr. Seitz said, it's a great opportunity. And anything that we can, if we can do it, you know, personally, I think is worthwhile.
Five hundred thousand, twenty percent is issued by the BDA, too.
And that's something that the BDA board's going to have to figure out. That's a BDA issue, that's not a county issue.
Quick, quick question. So do we have a technical spec that's already been developed? Or the requirements, technical specifications that's already been-
We've, I shouldn't say we, the BDA's requested several bids. One has come in so far. We believe that it's a very high bid, it's close to five hundred thousand dollars. We believe it actually could be less than that.
And is that going to generate enough power needed for future?
Yes. It's been done in conjunction with the EDP as well.
We haven't had a conversation with the city, city B bill, and they, they are not going to submit an application. So no competition there.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Good luck in how the real work becomes, begins. Mrs. Kentoo, as always, on behalf of the entire county, now on behalf of the B Development Authority and the Area Partnership, thank you for everything that you-
Yeah, I would, yes.
Please minimize her disruption in her daily affairs as a result. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, there's nothing further on the agenda. We move on to agenda item number five. Adjournment to have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody, for being here this morning.